Many of you already know soon to be Dr. Kristen Miles. Yeah, she's a board development with OSBA and helped those of you who had the opportunity to attend the pre-conference this year at the board conference. She was co-facilitating that. And that's pretty much why she's here today is to talk to us about superintendent evaluation and board self-evaluation because as we were participating in that training, we all sort of came to the realization that we have these things in place, but we'd always like to improve them and strengthen them and look for ways to support our strategic plan as a district through evaluating ourselves and what we're doing and evaluating our superintendent and the very, very important day-to-day work that he's doing in order to move the district forward. And the one thing I'll just say before I turn it over to Kristen is keep in mind that I always try to think and I encourage all of us to think beyond our time on the board. And you know, what best practices are we putting in place as a district so that those who come after us can take that torch and carry it forward for the betterment of kids? So with that, Kristen, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Sorry you're not feeling well. I'm sorry you lost your unicorn status.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me. I'm Kristen Miles. I'm the Director of Board Development at OSBA. Really happy to be here to talk you through our processes as far as board self-assessment and superintendent evaluation go. I will just start out by saying this is not a pitch for OSBA services. What I can do is walk you through what we do. But what I really want to convey to you is that no matter what you do, we believe that grounding practices in the best research available is really important. So the first thing I'm going to do is walk you through the research that's available. And if you did go to the pre-conference, you're going to hear me repeat some of what Dr. Alsberry talked about because that's the research upon which we rely when we bring you training and facilitation. And that's the, that's the research that underpins the tools that we use as well. So I'll walk you through our processes, which, which is the only thing I can speak to. But then I'm happy to discuss, answer questions, et cetera. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Hopefully you can see what I'm sharing, starting with board self-assessment. So what I want to talk just quickly about is, is the, the research. And as you likely know, that there was once upon a time, a question about do boards really make a difference? Do they just sort of sit on high and make decisions and they don't really make a difference in students' lives and in student achievement? And there was an essential question posed to that effect in the late 90s that was like, but wait, do boards, don't boards actually make a difference? And the answer was yes, in the, in the Seminole Project, the Lighthouse Project. And, and that answer was a little surprising. And so that research was replicated and, and you know, other researchers got involved and the answer kept coming back, yes, 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 you do make a difference. And so this is just a little picture of, of some of the key research that has come out. And you'll see Dr. Alsberry is, is mentioned there a couple of times. What I want to do is go through, and I'll go through in very brief. I know you spent a full day on this. I will not spend a full day going through the, the standards. But the board self-assessment that we use is licensed through Dr. Alsberry. And I just want to run through kind of quickly those standards upon which the board self-assessment is based. And then I'm going to, I'm going to show you what it looks like, what the board self-assessment looks like. So when we talk about the, the standards that, that this is based on, the research-based standards that say that when you're working toward these things, you are likely going to positively impact student outcomes. And it doesn't mean that you have to do all these things perfectly because we don't want to set you up for failure either and say unless you're doing things perfectly, you're not impacting kids. No, it's when you're working toward these things, you're impacting kids positively. And the first of those is vision-directed planning. And this is really, what is that vision? What do you want for your students? What do you want them not just to leave your district having experience, but what do you want them to experience while they're there? What do you want the student experience to be? And, and what do you want to create for them? How do you engage your community, your staff and your students in that plan for what do you want for your kids? And that's the, that's the, the grounding that you engage in to do your strategic priorities and to do your strategic planning as well. And if you see me looking over here, it's just because that's where my screen is that I can see. Community engagement, that looks different in every district, but it's recognizing that everybody is a stakeholder and it has interest in the outcomes for your kids. So that's staff, that's parents, that's community organizations with which you partner, and that's students as well. And so how do you partner with, with those folks that have an interest that you need support from? What does that look like to partner to do outreach, to go to where communities are to get their input as you do your planning? Your effective leadership is how do you establish that focus, that direction? How do you lead and, and model the way? We talk at OSBA a lot about modeling the way for, for the rest of the district, for the community. And, and that last piece I like, aligning authority and responsibility so that decisions can be made at the most local level. Part of that is about letting your superintendent do his job. So knowing where your job ends and where your superintendent's job begins and, and allowing that, that to naturally happen. And then accountability, holding those high expectations for the learning of every student and, and aligning your policy and resources to hold the system accountable. And what does that mean? So when you set your strategic priorities, how are you monitoring those? How are you monitoring progress on those priorities? At what points in the year are you getting information back to say, here's, you know, here's how we know as a board that we're moving toward success or progress on those strategic priorities? Any thoughts or questions about these first four or anything resonate that you want to ask about or talk about initially? It's okay if you don't. Okay, keep moving. The next one is about data. So as you're, as you're monitoring the system, what kind of data are you using? And when I say data, I don't just mean like state performance data. Data can be all kinds of information. It can be financial information. What's really important too is, you know, I always, I say this a lot, I don't know any district that just wants to be defined by the state report card. There are all kinds of ways in which you measure success in your own district and say, here's how we know that kids are learning, that kids are doing well. And so having that information as well and using that information to monitor progress on your system is important. Cultural responsiveness, recognizing diversity comes in many facets. Part of your big job is to eliminate and reduce barriers to access for your kids and to apply those diverse perspectives from your community, from your staff, from your students, to your programs, to policies. There are all kinds of ways to do this. Outreach to communities that don't typically have a voice or don't typically have a loud voice, who don't necessarily come to board meetings, that's important too. Culture and climate, this is, this, a lot of this is about modeling the way. Establishing that you expect that a culture, that there's a, a safe and welcoming culture for all students. And you do that by having a, a culture of respect on your board and a culture of collaboration with your superintendent and modeling that kind of relationship. That has a lot of impact on the rest of your district. And whether, whether you know it or not, it does, and the research shows us that it does. And so establishing that culture and climate can impact all the way down to the classroom level. Being a learning organization, so engaging in professional development yourself and engaging or expecting your superintendent and staff to engage in professional development. But reflection, I love these words, reflection, discovery, improvement, all of those positive things that not only contribute to a continuous improvement cycle, but that also recognize the strengths that you have as well and capitalizing on those strengths to do improvement. And then the last four, thinking of your district as a system. And when you're thinking as a system, what you're not doing is taking a problem here and moving it over here. You're thinking globally, you're thinking, you know, positive aspects, how can you leverage those across the districts, across the district? If there's an issue here, you know, how does that impact the entire system? Leveraging partnerships across the state, if you have them certainly locally, but thinking of the entire system as an organization made up of individual components, but not as separate components, but as an entire system. The innovation and creativity one is, is my favorite and, and I get like the, the most pushback on this one because people say like, okay, Kristen, but you tell us to stay out of the weeds all the time and that we can't be involved in the, and like you, you tell us we can't violate public meeting law. And yet, you know, how are we supposed to be innovative and creative when we can't talk outside of a board meeting and be innovative and creative? And my response to that is think about a time in the last three years that you've had to do things really, really differently at the district level. And I'm sure you can come up with a time in the last three years that things completely changed and you had to do things really differently where you had to, your teachers had to teach differently and you had to govern differently and the district had to be managed differently. And all of that was about innovation and creativity. And we all learned how to solve problems differently and how to run things differently and came out of that time with a lot of lessons learned and some of the ways of thinking and solving problems got carried forward. And so, so thinking about issues differently or thinking about problem solving differently is, is one way that, that impacts students and can impact students in a really positive way. The next one, board member conduct, ethics and relationship with the superintendent, that's roles and responsibilities. That's sort of board, board stuff 101. That's knowing where your role ends and your superintendent begins, where there's a little gray area, where you may overlap a little, but knowing that there is a line there. And, and then having that collaborative relationship that's built on trust and respect as well. And then the last one is budgeting and financial accountability, being good stewards of the money and understanding where it goes, understanding your responsibility for it and to the extent possible, aligning your finances with your strategic priorities and policies and goals. And so those are those 12 standards that again, if you're working toward them, really do, the research shows, improve student outcomes. And so when we apply those to board self-assessment, and again, we license this tool from Dr. Alsberry, what, what our goal is, is to help boards reflect on how they're doing on all of these standards so that you can set goals to improve and also acknowledge and leverage your strengths. So what does that look like? So what I'm showing you now is a screenshot from an actual board self-assessment. I'm going to show you a couple of screenshots from an actual board self-assessment that an actual board took. And, and I'll tell you what this is. So the, this first slide is of in general, in summary, the 12 standards. And, and so there are four categories of ratings. One is the red, that's ineffective, yellow is developing, blue is effective and green is accomplished. And so they've rated themselves from, from one to four in, on each of these standards in general. There are like 80 questions total. And so there are indicators when it, within each of these standards and I'll show you what that looks like. But the first thing you see for, from our tool, when you get a report is, okay, what does it look like on each of these 12 standards? And so you can see, I, I know this is a little bit blurry, but in this one, for this particular board, they need a lot of, they identify, self-identify as needing a lot of assistance with standard seven, culture and climate, and standard eight, being a learning organization, and found themselves to be most strong in budgeting and financial accountability. So when you dig a little deeper than what does that look like? So I, this is an example of their standard two, a few questions from standard two. So what I would show them is their rating on each of these questions and what does that look like? So these are four questions from standard two, which is about community engagement and their responses to each of those questions. And as you can see, that first question, which is about promoting practices that involve all segments of the community, they have a wide range of responses there with one person saying, we never do this, and two people saying, we do this all the time. And so I'll talk a little bit about what that means in a second. And then question 13 there about recognizing and celebrating the contributions of school and community members, that's pretty consistent. They feel pretty strong in that, in that area. And so you would get, I don't know, the report is something like 37 pages. You would get a report with each question, what that looked like. So what I would do, or what I, our practice in, in this particular tool is to ask boards to reflect on what they see. So, so what we do, when we administer this survey, everybody takes it on their own and, and it's all, it's anonymous and it's confidential. It's both of those things. So we administer it, we get it back. Nobody knows who said what unless you want to self-identify during the conversation, which we encourage because it's the conversation. And what I do is also send a number of questions ahead of time for reflection. And one of those is, so as you're looking at this report, what do you observe in the data? Just observations at this point, not interpretations of the question, but what do you see as you look through the report? What do you, what do you notice? And the next one would be then, what do you, what meaning do you make of it in a global sense? Then I ask, what do you see that's working? What needs improvement? Again, I would, I would suggest this kind of thing, no matter what tool you use, that this kind of conversation would be helpful. Particularly the, the what's working piece is a really good one to have. I think in, in my experience in education, we don't, we don't spend enough time on our strengths as well. And so in the board self-evaluation, it's a good time to highlight what we're doing well too. And so I always want to, to make sure the board gives themselves kudos for what is working as well as what needs improvement. And then sometimes there are questions that pop up, like as you looked through this, what questions do you have for your colleagues? Like, I wonder why folks rated it this way? Or I wonder how somebody else read this question because I read it this way. The analysis that we do of this tool, and again, I think that this could be extrapolated and used with any tool that you might use, is of course you want to look at overall areas of strength. And then we look at specific areas of strength too. So as we look at each of those standards, the overall performance and standards, as I ran you through those, like that board, you know, I've done, self-identified as needing some assistance in two of those areas and felt strong in one area, we look at that. We look at that overall standard. What does that mean? And then within each standard, there are some areas that really stand out as, okay, in this indicator, we're doing really well. And, and that's an important thing to pull out as a strength maybe that can be leveraged because the next thing we do is look at overall areas of improvement and then really specific areas of improvement, which can maybe be identified as goal areas later. The other thing that we do, and we have a, a formula that does this for us, is to look at areas of congruence and incongruence in answering. So we don't just look at scores, but we look where the board is on the same page and where it's not on the same page. So as I showed you on that one, that one slide that had the scores from standard two, those four questions, there was that one question that had the whole rainbow of colors and that's an incongruent answer. Like, you know, we had some folks saying this never happens, some folks saying it always happens and, and in between. So the question there is what caused that? Like, that's an interesting conversation at that point. Like, was that just the way that that was being read by folks? Is it a problem with the question? Is it that somebody hasn't made it through a full site? Like somebody's new and they haven't experienced that kind of thing yet? Or is there truly a difference in perception that like, I don't feel like we ever do this? And somebody else is saying, I feel like this is our practice all the time. Let's have that conversation. And, and because that kind of thing may never have been surfaced otherwise. And then areas of congruence, even if like, an area of congruence would be if the whole thing is red and the whole board is saying, we never do this thing, but the whole board's on the same page, that's congruence. They still agree. And it doesn't have to be that, you know, the whole board says, yes, we do this all the time. But the board being on the same page about something, we look at that too. And so, so we look at both of those things. Where are you in really strong agreement about things and where are you in really strong disagreement? And let's have that conversation. So we do that piece as well. And then we do goal setting. The last thing we want to do is, is just be like, here you go, you took a self-assessment, that's great, see you next year. It's not helpful to just walk away with a document. You have to walk away with something to do because now it's the, so what, now what? Piece of this. And so, so no matter what you do with an assessment, please set goals at the end of it. And it's, it's our belief that setting board-specific goals is really important. So you have your overall district goals likely that you had, you know, you've got goals for the district, you've got, you know, your strategic priorities, the overall goals. But do you have goals for yourself and your own professional development? And a tool like a self-assessment can lead you to do that, can lead you to set a very specific goal for the board itself. Obviously, as with all goals, we encourage them to be measurable, to be, have defined outcomes, that, that kind of thing, like you would with any other goal. And we encourage them to be tied to those evidence-based standards and reflective of your strategic priorities. So we don't want you to set goals in isolation of the work that you're already doing. So we wouldn't want you to set a goal that's, you know, we're going to go do this, you know, professional development over here, or we're going to go do this activity over here that has nothing to do with the work that you're doing on your board to already improve student learning and outcomes, or the work that you're already doing on your strategic priorities. Those can blend, those, there's always a way to, to put those pieces together. And so the goals that you set, again, regardless of what tool you use, let's make sure, or make sure to, to make them board-specific, tie them to those standards and reflective of your strategic priorities. And so that's what, again, no matter what you would do, I, I would want you, as your caring, disinterested third party, to walk away with goals that are reflective of all the work that you do. That's what I would say about board self-assessment. Now I'd want your questions or discussion on that before we move to superintendent evaluation.
All right. Questions for Kristen? Or comments?
So it's really just aligning those 12, right? 12 steps, are they outlined somewhere in this packet? Oh, this is superintendent, this is superintendent.
Right.
Really look at those with the district strategic plan.
I can certainly send you what I'm showing you tonight as an, you know, for, with those, with those standards. I, I send this slide, I send those three slides all over the state all the time. I'm happy to send those to you so that you've got those.
I think that would be helpful. I have her, from our pre-conference, but looking at those 12 to really align those, if we're going to set goals that are measurable and strategic, we should really.
Kristen, you have, I know when we do like panorama survey with students and, and staff, there's like, okay, if we want to improve in this strand, here are some like ideas or markers. Does, does, does this survey give you like idea? If you want to improve in this area, here are some ideas.
It doesn't, it doesn't have a guide. It doesn't have, yeah, it, it doesn't come with like, here are some like pre-baked ideas that would go along with that. No, we would, you would develop those specifically after you looked at what you wanted to do. Yeah.
That's, that's one of the advantages of working with OSBA board development specialists, from what I gather, right, Kristen? Is you could help us flush those out. So, you know, say we identify an area we want to improve, you can help us strategize those next steps and those steps we need to take to improve in those areas.
That's part of, yeah, that's part of what we do. And again, this is not a, I'm not here to sell services. I just want to walk you through like what I would recommend that you do, no matter what you do. But yes, that's part of what we would do.
No, it's okay. And I, I, I feel that from you, that you're really trying to make it known it's not a sales pitch and I appreciate it. But that's, it's okay. That's what, you know, OSBA is there to help us. That's, I mean, that's my opinion and, and I think you provide a valuable service. And so, yeah. And you know, I, I think I would just say, I, when we all did our self-assessment at the beginning of the year last summer, I think there was this feeling of, okay, great, we did that. And, and then, you know, and I think a few of you said, you know, well, now what? You know? And I think that's the piece that we're all feeling like is, is missing, let alone not really being aligned with these, you know, 12 evidence-based standards of effective boards and, and not really being, you know, substantively in, in alignment with our strategic plan either. It was just kind of something we did because we said we wanted to do it. And I think, you know, I think, I, I think everyone would probably agree that we were interested in, you know, being substantive and, and we're, we're, this is a board that's definitely more interested in the now what than just the what. So, but if anyone disagrees or has another thought, please feel free to jump in or add your thoughts.
I have a question about, around like, how many school districts have tried this in Oregon? And what kind of feedback are you getting from those districts?
I don't know exactly how many. We have more and more each year. I think this is the third year that we've had this tool. And I can tell you that, you know, our encouragement is to use the same tool regardless of what you do each year so that you can look at, at growth. If there was somebody that you wanted to connect with, I would suggest connecting with Corvallis. They've done it multiple years in a row and set goals every year. One of the things about this tool that you can get is when you do use it multiple years in a row, it shows you last year's data as well. So you get this year's, you get last year's, and you can see on the page what growth looks like or what development looks like. And, and they are one district that, that I've worked with personally that has done multiple years of this. The, the feedback that, that we've gotten is that this is, well, anytime we use something that's evidence-based and research-based, which we just continue to do more and more of all the time and have really moved to ground everything that we do, particularly in Dr. Alsberry's work because it's the most recent research. A, we feel very confident in bringing that to you because it's not just, here's what OSBA says. It's like, no, this is what the research says. But we've gotten a lot of positive feedback on this particular tool because it makes a lot of sense. Folks know that it is aligned with the research and it really does lead to some really clear feed, the tool gives feedback itself, you know, like here are the really specific areas in which you're doing well and you need improvement, which lead to some easier development of goals than the older tool that we use that we did just develop ourselves that was out there for a long period of time. And so we've got, in my experience and from what I've heard from the rest of my team, we've gotten really positive feedback. I don't know of any negative feedback we've gotten. It seems kind of daunting because there's like 80 questions in it, but it really only takes 15, 20 minutes.
I have a question about how long does this take? I'm assuming one, you take 20 minutes for the questions and then going over the data and goal setting is all in one meeting and about what's the average?
Yeah. I would say it's, it's generally like, it depends on how deeply the conversation goes, I would say, but I usually book a two-hour meeting to, to do that, to go over the data. And again, if there's a lot of- Again, i-if there's a lot of, well, for example, the board that I showed you. The real-life example of that, that would have been a longer conversation. Because they really felt like they, they had a lot of improvement to make in a lot of areas. I don't let boards set twelve goals for themselves, for example. So, so working to really prioritize and narrow down what is reasonable and possible to do in this next year. And prioritizing those things, that sometimes takes some time if there's a lot of areas that need improvement. Um, if there are fewer areas that there are to work on, that can take a little less time. But but generally, a two-hour meeting can can take care of going over the data. Especially if folks have prepared in advance and have and in advance and have looked at everything. And then the goal-setting piece is usually the piece that takes the longest.
The district strategic plan is a four-year document, right?
Yeah.
So is that something, I mean, boards change, right? So every couple of years, potentially, there's members moving in and out in maybe a perfect world scenario. That there haven't been vacancies to fill or or things like that. So would you recommend looking at maybe the four-year plan in in creating goals? So maybe something, these are important, but this year, the district, I think specifically, we've talked about community engagement. I'll get real specific with our, our district, community engagement. But looking at maybe one of these other twelve for, you know, moving forward. As something we'd like to work on, or is it something that you really look at year to year, or is that different? I just threw a lot of things out there, sorry.
Yeah, let, so let me see if I can, let me see if I understand, let me check for understanding. So um, thinking about, are are you talking about how the goal-setting piece in the, in the. In the self-assessment aligns with the timing of the strategic plan? As well as, tell me more about what.
If there's twelve areas, right, and you don't, and we do a board assessment and we see maybe there's four or five areas that. Uh, we'd like to set a goal, and but we're not gonna set five goals for one year.
Right.
So we look at the strategic plan as a four-year document and then potentially set board goals. Looking at the four-year plan of how we can collaboratively come together with maybe a focus each year on something. Possible so that we can, but but then. You know, I I do this, I talk on both sides. And then in two years, you potentially may have new board members in, have. A different idea, different, you know, they're bringing different.
Okay.
Well, and so, I guess, looking long-term, looking like people talked about. How not just for now, but how moving forward, what's the best way to globally?
Yeah.
This, or is it something really that happens maybe year to year, or just a couple of weeks out?
Yep. The the self-assessment piece is a little more short-term, because it is meant to be used every year to check growth. From the last time you set a goal. So if you've got a four-year strategic plan. The the kinds of goals that you might set long-term on that are not necessarily going to be the ones that are generated. By the the board self-assessment. So board self-assessment, let's, so let's say you've got, you know, one of your big buckets. Or one of your priority areas is community engagement, and you want to tie. How how that that standard of community engagement comes out, and you're really focused on that standard. And so we're looking through community engagement and we're seeing an area that could use some improvement. We're seeing an area of strength that could be leveraged to do that improvement, and we're setting a goal in community engagement to tie to that area. Of um, of your strategic plan. What I would say is, that's a one-year goal, specifically to to the board self-assessment. Because next year, you're gonna reassess, and you're gonna say, oh, here's how we did on that, now we're gonna look at another one. And that's very specific to the, to the board, like how are we plugging into this in a way? That um, is really specific to board action. So the self-assessment is is used to be a little more short-term.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, and Kristen, um, one thing I might add or clarify and tell me if I'm. Off-base here, but the the twelve evidence-based standards, those are really. Um, those are standards uh, for the board to be in support of our strategic plan. But they might, they they might be related, but they're not necessarily the same. So um, you know, the board following those twelve evidence-based standards is in su-support of a strategic plan. That might not necessarily have specifically any of those four things on our district strategic plan. For example, you know, we have attendance and freshman on track and graduation rates. Um, so what this is really saying is, if we're effective at the twelve things. Our district is more likely to execute on our, you know, commitment to having our kids regularly attend. And be on track to graduate, um, and those sorts of things. Is that, is that sounding, does that make sense? And Sarah, does that make sense to you too?
Yeah.
I was trying to figure out how we were aligning this, and it's.
Yeah. Yeah.
You for reading my mind and and um, putting us on.
We couldn't translate it.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
I'm just gonna reiterate that, cause that that will, that will in turn meet the needs of the strategic plan. We, those outcomes should, um, if the twelve areas are effective, then that, that's the hope of the strategic layer. And there's some that are.
Any more on board self-assessment before we move to superintendent evaluation? Okay, great. So, all, you've got our tool and I'll um, I'll walk you through our process. Um, I won't go page by page through the tool, but I'll talk about our process. Um, this is a tool that we wrote with COSA. In fact, um, we really wanted to collaborate with COSA. And um, so that we could really proudly go out a-around the state and be like. Our, you know, our sister organization that represents administrators and the organization that represents boards came together. And in the interest of both superintendents and boards, came up with a collaborative tool to um, to use that. Um, that was, that demonstrated that collaboration. And that was a great project. I was involved in that project. It was, I think it was two thousand nineteen, it was. It was in the 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 before times. And um, and we've used it ever since. And we've gotten a lot of good feedback on this, and I'll walk you through the process that we use that has also gotten some good feedback. So the the process in the tool is the the, well, the the outline of the tool. The first thing that you'll notice is that we use those standards, those um, the the assessment is based on, the bulk of it is based on those standards in there. And I will tell you that, you know, so in in COSA's research, what they could not find at the time. Were really evidence-based, nationally-normed superintendent standards. That there were administrator standards, but not specific to superintendents at the time. So we took those administrator standards, we we reformed them a little bit, but came very, very close to what, you know, we considered like. Really good standards. So those are the standards upon which the bulk of the tool is based that you would assess. Then there is room for superintendent-specific goals in there. Um, one of the things that we recommend with respect to um, assessing goals is, uh, and I'll talk about this in the, in the process. Is that goals should only be assessed if everybody, this is obvious, but if everybody knows what they are. And they've been agreed to at the beginning of the evaluation process. And I say that because um, I facilitate a lot of superintendent evaluations. And I have been in many of these where we get to the end of the process and I ask, okay, were there any goals that were set that we're assessing on? And and it comes out that like, well, we think that they set this goal in this area, but did we ever adopt that? I'm not sure, we haven't checked in on that. And and I'm like, you can't, like, unless there is like wide agreement between all parties. That this was something that was going to be evaluated, we can't evaluate it. And so, having an a common expectation at the beginning of the the cycle is really important. Um, this is where, um, this is, this is what we have heard about as the transformational piece. That we added to this process and to this tool that we hear a lot of really good things about. So the evidence of performance piece, we added this section because this was such good feedback. We didn't used to have an evidence of performance piece with check-ins, uh, with a self-evaluation and a portfolio of evidence. And you'll see in there, there are lists of things that a superintendent might turn into the board to say. Here's some evidence of the things that I have done to meet this standard. And of course, that's not meant to be like, you have to submit all of these things, it's just kinds of things. Because boards would say to us, again, you tell us to stay out of the weeds, you tell us not to manage. And then you want us to evaluate things that we have no business being in the daily doings for. And we were like, that's fair. And so, um, we worked with COSA to come up with, okay, well, how would you demonstrate these kinds of things? If the board is not watching you do your daily job, which we, again, still don't want, you know, we is, I I'm a locally-elected board member too. I also don't want to be in the daily business of my superintendent. I don't, I don't want to be, I don't have to be. And um, and so we came up with this portfolio idea, which we've had really good feedback on. The self-evaluation, we have bore, we have the superintendent do the same evaluation. We have them fill out this um, this form as well, um, assessing themselves on the standards. And then the portfolio piece is the rest of it. And then the quarterly check-ins piece, this is what we've heard so many good things about. So I always use myself as an example and say, I wanna know throughout the year how I'm doing. I don't wanna wait until my high-stakes evaluation in June to know how I've done throughout the year. Nobody does. And so, you can have, you can have candid conversations in executive session. If they are, just like you do with your final evaluation at the end of the year, or in March, or whenever you do it. If they are aligned with the statutory criteria of why you can go into executive session. So if you're having, and I'm not an attorney, so this is not legal advice, but if you're having an evaluative conversation. That meets the criteria of the law in going into executive session. You can have an evaluative conversation that doesn't produce a big report at the end of it. That is, uh, that is a, an evaluative conversation that is a check-in along the way, and we recommend those be quarterly. At at least, unless everybody wants more of those. And you're evaluating progress on goals, you're evaluating standards, you're talking about these things along the way. So that there are no big surprises, positive or negative, at the end of the year. And you can, and it's meant to be both support and accountability, because the whole thing should be about support and accountability. And there should be no surprises either way. And um, and we've had really good feedback, boards that have adopted that process and have had those, those check-ins. Um, we've heard good things from both superintendents and boards. The community feedback piece, um, you can do yourself. We have a process that we do called a targeted feedback survey. That um, is aligned to the standards in the um, in the tool. Um, we have a bank of questions that we put out, well, there's a bank for each standard. And the board chooses three standards that they would like to survey both staff and community members on. They choose groups of staff and community members that have knowledge of the superintendent's job, that's why it's targeted. We administer a survey, then we bring the um, summary results back to the board uh, in executive session. And go over that as a piece of evidence, not, it's not the evaluation, it is part of the evaluation. And um, again, it's, our questions are aligned to the standards. We don't let boards write their own questions. This is a little bit proprietary, which is why this is an optional piece, it's a different service. But um, but it's all aligned to the standards and um, and that, that's something that that we do and facilitate. And then there's the formal evaluation at the end. So the standards, um, are, the first one is visionary district leadership, and that's about collaboration with the board. It's about inclusion of the community in doing that. It's a, it's a lot like the first standard for the board. It's about, you know, that vision setting for the district. Um, does the superintendent implement those strategic priorities that are set by the board, and do they report back? That second standard is about ethics and professional norms, being fair, being transparent, modeling that behavior. You'll see that a lot of these have to do, are very close to what um, the board should be doing as well. The third is inclusive district culture, a supportive culture, modeling a supportive culture, encouraging that culture, evaluating. And advocating for instruction that supports that kind of um, inclusive, welcoming, safe culture in the district. Then culturally-responsive instructional leadership. Um, the superintendent designs and evaluates system of instruction and support that are culturally responsive. Ensures that staff are trained in culturally-responsive instruction and improvement. And then the last four, communications and community relations, again. Um, understanding that there are multiple groups of stakeholders interested in the, in the performance and the success of the district. And engaging with those constitu- constituencies and partners. Effective management of the organization, so hiring practices, retention practices, systems thinking, just like you do. And um, good relationships with your associations, with your unions. Um, effective financial management, just like you do, being good steward of the money. And then policy governance and advocacy, um, advocating both formally and informally for the needs of the district. A good relationship with the board, knowledge, knowledgeable of the laws and the rules that impact the district. And um, ability to convey those. Those are the standards. And then as far as the timeline, um, we see this as sort of an ongoing cycle. Once one cycle ends, the next one begins. So um, so you adopt the evaluation process in the tool. And you adopt that in an open meeting. You say, this is the timeline, this is the process, and this is the tool that we're gonna use. And as you know, because you have it in front of you, our tool, this, un-unlike the board self-assessment. The tool that we use for um, for the superintendent evaluation is free. It's out there on the website. You can modify it if you wanna, if you wanna do that. When we facilitate, we don't really modify it, but if you wanted to take it, facilitate your own process, you can modify it to, you know, your wishes and desires. Um, after that, you would set goals. We always encourage that the superintendent come with their own goals first. And that the board adopt those, or, you know, work together to make any tweaks necessary. And then formally adopt those, so that everybody knows what the expectations are, and everybody knows that those are gonna be evaluated at the end of the cycle. Have and schedule those quarterly evaluative check-ins. Again, if there is community feedback in whatever form you wanna do that prior to the evaluation. Um, that's always gonna be optional for you, but that's um, that's done obviously before the end of the cycle. And then your formative, or your formal summative evaluation. Right after that evaluation is complete, you start the cycle again, you decide on the timeline, the process and the tool. And it, and it keeps going like that. And that's what we recommend.
Brad, do you give us two updates or one update on your goals? I know we get them from you, but I can't remember the time.
Typically, typically one in December, January, and then the evaluations in February.
That you set them in the summer and.
Yeah, I was just kind of writing down some options. If we did that, um, setting the goals and. You know, you could do it in November and uh, February. And then we did, I meant in May, I think we have a work session. Maybe that's, or maybe. Where we'll go over end of your data.
As you're thinking of questions, um, one of the things I might point out to just sort of jog some discussion is. Um, you'll notice, or maybe you didn't notice, but. Um, the OSBA tool and what they recommend is, um, each individual board member does an evaluation. Um, but we meet as a board and we come to a consensus of what the rating is for each standard. Through through a discussion. Um, and that's different from our um, practice right now. Where we each do an individual rating, and then it sort of becomes like an average. Um, and I wondered, Kristen, maybe you could speak to.
And talk through that, yeah.
Yeah, what, why that is, what the recommendation is there.
So we don't do, when we facilitate, we don't do averages, because it, it has the potential not to represent anybody. When you do an average. So if you've got some people, like, I mean, I'm gonna speak in hyperbole for a second, just to illustrate a point. But if you've got, you know, like, have people. like, have people over here, slightly less than half people over here giving a four, and the rest of you giving a one, you average those out, nobody's represented. And so what we do is, is build consensus. And, and in fact, I don't ask a board to come up with a score until after we've had the discussion and have decided on the comments. And then what is reflect, what is the score that's reflective of the comments? So, well, yeah, so the process that, that I would facilitate is that everybody would take that booklet, they would go home, they would, they would fill it out. And they would, they would come prepared for a discussion. And we would have the discussion, and let's say we started with standard one. We would, we would talk about the substantive piece first. We wouldn't talk about scores yet. We would, we would do comments and, and talk about, you know, where, where are we aligned? What is our thinking about, what is your thinking about the overall message that you want to give your superintendent? And, and some of that might be, you know, um, like, yes, this is, this is a very strong area in these ways. There might be, there are also little ways in which like, and we would like to see a goal set in this area in this particular way, or, or whatever. There's a million possibilities that, you know, could be reached, um, for any particular standard. But we come to consensus about two or three statements that you'd wanna make with each standard. Cause you also don't wanna be overwhelming in your narrative. Um, you want it to be helpful and concise and really to the point. And then after that discussion, and what I do is in real time, it's my job to be your scribe. It's my job to, to capture the summary of what you're saying, and I let you watch me type as I am capturing the themes of what you're saying. And, um, after that discussion and we get to sort of the core of what you're saying, then I would ask you, now what's, what's the score that's reflective of what you just talked about? And together you would come up with, okay, this is the score. And so, and that may be different than what you started out with at home, but then together as a group, you would come up with that number. And that's how we would move through each of the standards, and that tends to work pretty well.
That meeting takes place with just the board, absent the superintendent?
Yes, generally so. Um, and then, and then what would happen afterward is after the board had come up with a draft of that, um, then the superintendent would come in, the board would present that draft, and the superintendent would get to look at that and reflect. Um, the other possibility is that, and I, and I see this done quite a bit too, is that the superintendent would get a chance to look at that, but then get to walk away with that and have some time to reflect on their own. Come back for the next meeting in another executive session. Present their, you know, their thoughts on that, and then the board would make any changes they wanted to based on any of that feedback or none, if they didn't want to, and then formally adopt the, um, the evaluation at the end of that. So it could take two meetings with the, the, a very short executive session at the second meeting. But, um, but that's quite frequently what happens.
And do you help sort of, I'm just thinking of, um, making sure all voices are heard. Do you sort of help facilitate, you know, not necessarily mediate, but facilitate the conversation to make sure that, you know, someone like me, I'll, I'll call myself out, isn't dominating the conversation and that we're hearing from, from everybody. That part of the process too.
It's really important because it's the whole board's job to evaluate, you know. I will often hear from boards, well, we just do this by committee, or it's the board's, the board chair's job. And we feel very strongly that that, one of the most important things that the whole board does together is evaluate the, is hire and evaluate a superintendent. And, um, and yes, so part of our job as effective facilitators is making sure that everybody has a voice and gets to use their voice, um, in whatever way they feel comfortable doing so. And, um, so yes, everybody, everybody should be and gets a chance to be heard. Yep.
Great.
Definitely should be part of the facilitator skillset.
Yes, good.
So is this something that OSBA is hired to do and sits in on potentially your peers? Is there someone that's trained in the district to then potentially facilitate that conversation? Or is it something? So, OSBA comes every year and do this, once you figure it out, but that means.
So we do this, we provide this service. And so, um, so a lot of times, like, I'm working with the district right now. I've done this for them for four years in a row, for example. And they, they hire me to come in every year and facilitate this for them. Now, is it also possible that somebody could watch me do it one year and be like, we can do that in the next year? Sure. But, um, so it just depends on, on your needs, but a lot of times, but we end up doing a lot of these around the state. And, and part of that, I think, is because, um, the, you know, if, if a board member is doing it, they're not participating in the same way that they would without an external facilitator. And so we find a lot of times it falls to the board chair to facilitate if, if they don't have an external facilitator. And so our role is to make sure that the chair, whoever else is gonna be doing it, gets to participate in the same way that everybody else does.
What is the cost?
So this one is by the hour, and, um, and I believe our hourly rate is one seventy-five an hour. Um, and then there are travel expenses. If we do this, um, it, we often do it remotely, but there are, well, we do part of it remotely. Um, sometimes, but, um, but then there are, there are travel expenses as well. Um, the, the reason we charge this one by the hour instead of like a, a package rate is because it, it can really depend. Sometimes this conversation takes a long time. And sometimes, um, it can be rather short, if, again, if everybody's on the same page. Um, and so unlike the board self-assessment, we can't really say, this is probably a two-hour meeting. It's just, it varies pretty widely, so we charge by the hour for that one.
I have a question. Have a question, have you seen what we, how we evaluate our superintendent currently? Did anybody give you that form?
I think I did get that form, yes.
And the reason I bring it up, I feel that that form really covers a big area, a lot of the stuff we've wanted to, to evaluate it. Yeah, I think where it breaks down is at the very end when we do the presentation, and then it's like a report card. But, so we don't get together like she said, we go home and do, we all do it individually, and then we get back and then we jointly come up with something, but. I don't know how the rest of you feel, but what we currently do and.
I like how this in here lines out, and I think it's pretty similar to the rubric that we use as, um, Rick, that we're currently using and has these broken out. I think it's really similar. What I really appreciated was, um, not looking at the average, because that doesn't really reflect, um, each, it doesn't really give a good reflective score. So I appreciated that feedback.
I, I think when, and we put, I think Michael and I were in the August one where we did superintendent evaluation. I don't know when we did the summer OSBA, if anybody went to one of those sessions. Uh, but that stood out to me, because I don't think there's been a year where we're in that meeting where somebody doesn't say, I just don't know what this would look like. And then, so there's no really discussion before there's a kind of a number put on it, so, uh, I feel like that happens every year.
Yeah.
Uh, so that makes way more sense to have that discussion.
And coming with thoughts, but then the collaborative group really teasing that out and, and getting to the, to the understanding and to the.
I like the idea of having an external party, facilitating the conversations. I think there's always, um, power dynamics, and I think that there's, I think it's, it's a really great skill to have somebody pull out more information or more discussion, ask some questions to be more thoughtful and reflective than if one person is kind of doing it independently, while they also do think that the process that we have um, practiced in the past few years, or at least the years that I have been present. Um, I think that we do our best, but I think it adds a particular, um, benefit to have an additional external facilitator, support the conversation and the dialogue and, and kind of bring out some things, because we can all be pretty nose-blind to our processes. And, um, I also like, this feels a little bit more comprehensive, um, more thorough, yeah.
I appreciate you saying that, Nancy, and I can, and Dawn, you might attest to this, but as someone who's facilitated the, the evaluation process, I do feel that push and pull of trying to facilitate the meeting and trying to participate and make sure everyone's voice is heard. And also make sure I'm thinking of, you know, questions, make sure that people are able to participate, you know, fully and that the power dynamics and not just, you know, that all those things are accounted for. And so I like that. The other thing I really like about this is, um, the quarterly check-ins, I think are great. Um, not that we need, you know, the last thing we all need is more meetings. Um, but the goal here, right, is to be that support for our superintendent. Um, and the goal is to make improvements for kids, right? And we can't do that once a year. Um, so the idea of setting goals and meeting on those and provide, getting updates and providing support on those throughout the year on a quarterly basis um, was really, really appealing to me too.
Yeah, I like it, the quarterly part, because when a new board member comes in, then they're not like, oh my gosh, what is this? And asking a whole bunch of questions and feeling like, I wish I would have paid attention, so I think, um.
It must learning so much, too. So I think that even when you are at the beginning, you get a little bit more context and more confidence as time goes on, because there's more information to kind of press and land and make sense of.
And if you don't know what you're evaluating, then you don't know, like, I was like, oh my gosh. And you're trying to like, oh, wish I would have paid attention when we saw Brandon at this school, I could have evaluated this or whatever. Cause that's what I mean, like, by paying attention. And, um, so I think that's great, and you can probably do that so that you can do it maybe in August when they have a month or it's not overwhelming or something. So it's not just like a shock of, oh my goodness gracious. Yeah, that's why I like that part.
Because I think we've all come into, the first time we've done a superintendent evaluation of, I'm not really sure what I was supposed to do or how this was supposed to, so having those quarters laid in.
I also, yes, in, in sitting in my seat, I think, you know, I, I've just done my goals really the same way. They kind of how Teresa did it, I'm bending them, and it's just like, it'd be nice to like, really get more concrete and markers to where, I mean, the strategic plan is brilliant.
Uh, yeah.
You know, a big marker, but there's a lot more to a evaluation than just, you know, academic performance, so. But really narrow down how we will, uh, what, what outcomes we're looking for and how we'll measure it, so.
And that was kind of another question is, we hear your goals and we think that they're great, but how do you come up with them? So that's interesting to hear that it's what was modeled, or, you know, kind of what.
It, it's kind, it's just a little more, but it basically, based on my previous evaluation that I heard it, and I think, okay, I'm gonna continue to, you know, uh, specifically call out in this, in the, in this rubric. Um, but again, it's just like.
And I also think it opens the opportunity. I mean, I hear the board oftentimes ask, what can we do to support you? And it provides a continuity where it allows for additional true support versus like, gotcha, you didn't do this, and I don't think any of us do this.
My assumption, I've never seen it, but I'm not sure what it feels like on your end, cause I'm not you. Um, but I don't think that that is what we do, but I think it really provides an opportunity for more authentic connection and alignment with strategic plans, these standards and your goals, right? There is a little bit of a check for us to be more accountable, more thoughtful and in alignment with what you're doing. I kind of wonder why we haven't thought of this before.
Well, I was just gonna say, I feel like we talk about it, but it's smart. It's like, oh crap, we are adopting the board superintendent evaluation, and we wanna change it, it's probably next year. But this is why that, I think, timing is, uh, why the board wants to have this and it worked out as a good work session to say, hey, what do we want for next year? And starting in whatever the timeline wants to start, so. Um, you're right, it's like, why have we done this?
I mean, like, I have a way back to the goals with the strategic plans, with the board self-evaluation.
I mean, that's a really good point, and that's what I mean, that sometimes we get so nose-blind, right? We get so used to looking at the here and now, that it, I, I think that it is our intention, but following through with that intentionality becomes a little bit tricky, and then by then we're like, oh, it's too late. Kind of like the same thing that we do with the student representatives. We continue to say, we want to do something different, and then by the time we remember, we're like, oh man, it is September, what are we doing? So it just helps to track better.
How much is the, the, not the superintendent evaluation, but this, uh, board, how much does that cost?
Seven fifty plus any travel.
That's hundred dollars, by the way.
Yeah.
I thought it was a pretty good deal. Yeah.
Not seventy-five hundred, seven hundred and fifty dollars plus travel.
That's what I thought, so I'm glad it clarified, cause I would have been shocked if it was together. But I've seen the.
You've seen that.
The board gives us, yeah, I've seen the breakdown, a little bit more.
And one of the standards is professional development, learn and mentor, so, you know, that goes melt pretty well together, so.
Yeah.
It's like a line item on the budget, or is it part of the professional development, like?
Yeah, so we, we have to see how it, uh, do you power?
Yeah, it's okay, I'm fine, I should be.
It's, you know, superintendent, the, the board has actually a budget. I don't know how it broke, like, professional development, travel. We have to see where that is, but, um, we can't, I mean, just gonna pull that out. And just talking about professional development opportunities, this is a really engaged board that wants to do professional development. And so really looking at that budget line item this year, to say, hey, where, first of all, where are we? What, what have you just overspent in that area or? Or is it, is it sufficient? Sorry, we're getting into other, but I think, I think it marries a little bit, but.
I mean, the thing, oh, go ahead, Rick.
I was just gonna say, the quarterly check-in, we do that now, but that's something you initiated, right? And you're checking in with those rather than I was checking in with you, and that's true.
Yeah, so individually, yeah, um, just, just kind of those check-ins. And I think it would be, I think it's, if, once I have the umbrella of the goals, sometimes those are different conversations and actually just my goals, um, which often they are actually, but, uh, but I think just, and I don't think it'd be that much just to have, I mean, I'd love to, Chris and your ideas, like, what does that look like in a, you know, board meeting, just to say, hey, here's, here's where we are, there's a information discussion, and then go, I mean, I think we could.
I think it has an exec though, doesn't it? It doesn't happen in.
You, so if you, if, if the conver, you can do it in executive session if you want to have, you know, and like, so you can do it as a superintendent report, right? Like, you can be like, here I am with my goals, and I mean, my superintendent does that, you know, for the board that I'm on. And, um, but if we wanted to have a more like, hey, we wanna, we wanna do sort of an evaluative check-in, not because anything is wrong, but because we just wanna have, you know, a, a closed-door conversation and have a, have an executive session conversation about like, let's just check in on the standards, let's check in on your goals, in sort of a like, let's give you some feedback way. Um, that is candid. Um, you can do that as long as you're sticking to the executive session provision, right? You can do that in executive session, so, um, but if you just want it to be more of a report that, you know, that the public can hear as well, there's benefits to that as well. Um, you can do that as part of a superintendent report, certainly, or both.
I think you've mostly done your, the updates, your goals, and presented your goals to, in, in your superintendent.
All right, any more questions, comments for Kristen?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Thanks for coming. So I think next steps for us is we'll just, um, you know, keep this, and we'll have. Thanks for coming. So I think next steps for us is we'll just, you know, keep this and we'll have a probably bring this back for a discussion as a board at our next meeting and and think about this as we think about timelines for adopting the evaluation processes that we utilize and definitely want to keep the conversation going on this. But Kristen, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Let me know if I can do anything for you or if you have any questions.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Bye bye.
All right. Great discussion. Next thing is Safe Zone Solutions, Brent.
Yeah, just to kind of piggyback, this is good timing because we will have some things that we do bring back. I'm going back to the superintendent evaluation. If we want to do that, we can say, hey, if we want to adopt this different model or use this service, then then we can, it's it's budget season two coming up too. So it it just falls in line to actually make some
Because that's that is that February or March, I think we have.
Yeah. Okay, Safe Zone Solutions, we, you have a report. I know you, we emailed a PDF. This is a hard copy that they brought by yesterday. We did walk-throughs of all our schools with Safe Zone Solution reps and their vendor that they have worked with, they put together actually a package proposal essentially. I think this is kind of twofold. I think, I think, you know, we've asked them to give us more information and just really detail some of the costs and what it actually looks like. And I think this was kind of a trial run for them to say, this is what we could do for, this is how we want to practice creating a package proposal together. You will, you will see a lot of information in here. It's, it it moves from what you'll see a lot of information. I will point you to the the walkthrough and the cost on page eleven is where they talk a little bit about well, they they determined its economic cost benefit of Safe Zone Solution. And what the walkthrough and the estimates did for our, all of our buildings was you can see those bullet points at the bottom, those four four bullet points. So the glazing of interior and exterior, and this is all of those. There's six million and then the interior doors and exterior doors at one point four million. Rick, do you want to share anything else about the walkthroughs or anything or?
Yeah, I can. I also, I brought this in for everybody to, this is this is an article on Sandy Hook. Okay. And I I have noticed he referenced it, it has a small blurb in there on it. But I went through this. I was very sensitive to Sandy Hook one because I was announcing basketball games when that took place. And I remember we had a Friday night and they asked me to do it, you know. That's the time of the, you know, reflection, which we did. So anyway, it kind of shows you what Sandy Hook did. They rebuilt and with a very open looking concept, but they utilize the same concepts at Safe Zone, just the closing, namely windows and doors. So just brought that in for your information. So one other thing I can mention is in the appendix, not in this book, but if you go online, you can click on it. And if you haven't done it, it'll bring up what the square footage is of the each door and you know, for the whole whole school district, all five schools and the district office. So with that, you need your computer to do that. And so that's essentially what what I can have, I guess.
And I don't think, I don't know. I think kind of reviewing this and then we can put it out for information discussion if there's any action or anything that could kind of seeing how we want to proceed or.
I I I know what they want. They they want us to sign up with them, shall we say, partner with them, or to hire them, whatever the proper term is, to pursue raising the funds to implement that proposal. And and with that, I had questions in my mind, like, if if we were to do that, what would be the length of time? We don't want to make it unended. Three, three months to implement would be probably too short. So with six months being proper time, at least to reflect on it and see if you want to extend it. If we get to that, that is.
Yeah, I mean, they put a lot of work into this. I think it's worthy of a discussion item and it doesn't necessarily need to be the next board meeting, but I would say that, you know, next couple of board meetings after you really review this and if there's any other, you know, consultants, if we wanted, after Ernie Whitehead, who's consulted a lot of things for us, if we want to ask his, some should be gathered some. John was in a meeting today with Safe Zone Solutions and Ashland School District. And so they had some more, a little more information. You know, today and add some question and answer period. So you'll fill in tomorrow on that discussion. So.
Yeah, personally, I'd appreciate if you could table enough for the next meeting, because the meeting ends, I'm not gonna be in there. I would like to be here for it.
So at least till February fifteenth, retire will not be here.
Do you want it first meeting in March?
Which is early, right? March sixth or something or seventh? I mean, does that work?
I might not be here, but it's okay. I can do from virtual. I might be at Pace.
I mean, we could do it. I possibly could.
I'm fine not being here. I mean, I I'm totally fine. I'm just letting you know, it might not be a full board. And I might, but I will zoom in if I can.
Okay.
And I don't, I haven't booked my flight, so who knows?
So that's, we'll look at February fifteenth or March sixth, because I certainly can potentially zoom in too. So if not February first, so appreciate that. Yeah.
I'm I'm.
So the sorry, just the conversation is about putting this on the agenda as a as an action item. What's, what are we talking about now?
No, I think more just discussion. And if there's any other information we want to gather, we certainly, March probably would make sense then to get if we're gonna get some other information or thoughts or you know, I think due diligence, that's what the, and the meeting was today with the, with Safe Zone Solutions and Ashland School District reps and John was there as well because so the more information we can get.
Safe Zone was, just to understand, that was the company, the gentleman that came to the board meeting to talk about, he's kind of a contractor for the product for the bulletproof film?
No, he didn't sell it.
Yeah.
This is just the foundation behind the concept.
Okay.
There is a nonprofit foundation, Safe Zone Solutions.
Okay.
To five one two three.
So, but that's is the same.
Yes.
Okay.
Same, same.
Yeah.
And then they have a vendor that does, you know, the the film or the bulletproof glass or the doors locally that that they partner with. So they they were like doing the walkthrough. It really doesn't commit us to anything. I mean, they bring
And it seems like there would be money out in the world for these types of things that would help fund this. I don't know, but.
We had a meeting with our SROs, John, Rick was there, Safe Zone Solutions. And we expressed, or I expressed a little bit of hesitation of asking our local teams, I mean, this is more be more of a federal or Sandy Hook Foundation or Columbine Foundation. Things of that nature, rather than tap, because we tap our local quite a bit. So so it just, and they they heard, yeah, they heard that. So.
And that was one of my concerns because I don't know, I mean, I know they're going to go after grants and federal grants. I know that we sometimes do too. So I I want to make sure that we're in communication with them of going and they said they were going to talk to our senators and that, and that's fine, but I don't want I just want like open communication because I don't want there to be it kind of being like, well, we can give you one. We all know how talking to representatives sometimes goes or or sometimes grants, like, well, you you already asked for this, we can't get you. So I just want to make sure that we're not competing within ourselves. Does that make sense? And that was one of my concerns. And then the other question was, I'm glad that we're looking at different options. Have we contacted Pace or is there insure, is there a way to get this through like insurance? Like maybe sometimes assurance initiatives or incentives or something like that. And, yeah, sometimes matching or even if you maybe, maybe you won't get matching, but maybe you can get a discount on your insurance. So you can kind of do one pool from another. Does that make sense?
If you do this, you get.
Right, that's right. Right, you know.
We do that all the time. And
Yeah, I always do it for, we do it for cybersecurity and other things. If you do this, if you fill out this survey. So I don't know if Pace has the option. I know that
That's a good point.
I know they're looking at that. And I know for Pace Days and stuff, they brought different vendors in as well. And also, is there, if is there a vendor for doors and windows and all that that is more, will give you a better deal on insurance, you know, what is, what is recommended and what? Yeah, yeah. I mean, not necessarily. I just want to make sure that we've got all of our bases covered because it was like, you know, insurance is like, well, if you would have picked this, we would have gave you this much more. And then we're like, dang it. So I don't want to say dang it. Those are my only.
Missed the opportunity.
So like, I, yeah, those are my, those were my main two questions of of that.
And as you know, John's really good at finding, but I mean, things come with school safety facilities in some ways. And so he has kind of a, I haven't seen much lately, but he's, I mean, he's always looking for something like.
He is. And that's what I was like, oh, I can see John because he's always like, he's got focused on grants and go, oh, I wanted this grant for this, brought, you know, to build a fence, for instance, around this facility. It counts as safety, but do I get, like, that's where I'm talking about running in. Yeah. And.
And also, what is the this, it sounds like a weird question in my brain, but like, what is the community input around this? Like, as you're bringing up fences, I remember I was so excited when there was fences. And in community groups, some people were like, our children are not prisoners. I mean, of course, there's some people that take things out of context, but also how do we involve community and get community buy-in for these sorts of things? Because I love that we get to serve a really broad range of individuals with different viewpoints and interests, but what is like, where are they in this process to ensure I don't know, information or buy-in or because this tends to be a little bit of a, not that it needs to be, but it becomes a little bit of a political conversation and action. And for some people, again, I'm just using the fence situation. I just remember people being like so upset about that. And I couldn't really understand that. But again, my brain's just.
So Nancy, you're speaking to, I have, I have two. First of all, we all care about student safety and I think we can all agree on that. You're touching on Nancy, one of two major concerns I have about where we're at so far this point. Number one, if we are concerned about safety in our district, then I don't think the solution is to jump straight to a specific organization with one specific solution. Let's bring in a neutral party who can evaluate our systems throughout the school district and give us some recommendations on things we can do to improve safety, right? And then and then, yes, let's get some community input. The thing that perhaps scares me the the most about this is their funding for this seems very aspirational. So it's things like seek, we will seek grants. They don't have, it doesn't appear to me they have anything lined up specifically. And that makes me really nervous. Number one, I don't want to commit to something we can't follow through on because I think we'd all agree, we don't have one point four million in the budget to do this on our own, certainly not six. And so, uh, you know, if they had come to us and said, if you agree to this, the Sandy Hook Foundation will pay for the one point four million, done deal, right? They're not saying that. They're saying they're going to seek funding. They're going to try. I'm not seeing where they have the funding lined up. So I have a lot of concerns, frankly. And I think if we're going to address safety, we should do it holistically. And we should do it with community input, absolutely. And let's, let's get an independent evaluation of of where we're at right now, which I feel like is really good. And we've made really good improvements. But I have a lot of skepticism about this at this point in the process. So just, just my opinion.
Thank you, Michael. I, you know, there was another thing that was kind of rattling in the back of my brain around. What? I I love when there can be collaborative problem solving efforts. And this just seems like very aspirational and not necessarily more supportive of look seeking for funding, especially as you know, we just came off some negotiations and people going, well, you, I mean, it's a tricky balance. And and maybe I'm just over speculating, but I think it's just important to be thoughtful about all of those pieces that could give perceptions that we probably want to be just thoughtful of. So not to potentially drag out or extend because understanding that the longer that we spend talking about this potentially is is more time not action. But I I agree with Michael and maybe something like a long-term strategic plan in student safety to to move us forward as we make steps, maybe looking at it holistically. And then this is maybe a first step or this is a second step, but really information gathering to have that strategic plan in place.
Yeah, and and you know, an independent review of the product itself, right? I mean, all we've heard, we've only heard from you know, this one organization about this one product. Its effectiveness is only based on what they've told, how effective they've told us it is, you know. And so you know, Rick, I I know this is an especially important subject to you. And I know you and Rebecca especially have put a lot of work into this and I want to, I want to honor that and respect that. And I think, you know, the thing we can all unite around is is student safety. I just have a lot of questions and hesitations about plowing forward with the specific solution at this point.
I, the timing is good. Saturday, I'll be attending, I Love You Guys Foundation. Someone are basically at the Smollett Center that talks about reunification, talks about, maybe we talked about I Love You Guys Foundation that that really goes through kind of all the safety. Talks about the safety plans and and you know, in the event of this happening, what the, what the proper procedures are. And so they're here locally on Saturday. So I can certainly, if anybody wants to join, happy to join. It's from eight to four on.
I think they're open for, because I got a flyer on it, but it didn't say where to sign up or anything.
I think I will look for it. And I think there is still space because I got an email earlier that basically said you're registered. If you know anybody else that'd like to attend, there's still space. So I'll look for it tonight and send it to you.
Is this something to collaboratively, we can talk about regionally, Metford, right? Did their big training?
Is this something to collaboratively, we can talk about regionally, Metford, right, did their big um, training at the beginning of the year, right? And in case of a catastrophic incident, and so some of this also seems regionally, how are we partnering together? What are we doing in with, again, that whole big picture?
No, definitely, thanks for bringing up, um, you know, a lot of talking points and kind of information gathering and kind of. You know, we do have a long-range facility plan, um, and so how is that, and I know there's some safety features in there. And we've checked a lot of them with the bond, which was great, uh, but there's still, you know, maybe some limitations for, you know, five-year, ten-year, fifteen-year, so.
Or something we can look at too, again, with community groups in adding a section to that long plan.
Yeah.
So that we can stretch each of them forward with them.
And I would like to see, sorry, um, when we go out to the community groups, I know this is way ahead of things, but how to be really sensitive? Because we don't want our, what we're vulnerable at to be out in the public. And we don't want parents to get upset and go on social media and say, did you know that? You know, someone could come in and do this and, and so I think that this is, I mean, I. I want to get community input, but I want, maybe that's something you can ask on, when you're getting community input, how do you? How, yeah, review, yeah, review like all your secrets, but you are, and not scare people, cuz we don't want the next day, nobody to show up. Our attendance was the worst attendance, cuz we had a school board meeting, um, that probably would not be good, um, and so how do you? How do you do that, right?
Yeah.
Birdbells.
Yeah. And I wanna be careful.
These are all our vulnerabilities.
Yeah, yeah.
Getting this plan loaded up on here, it has a lot of information.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I didn't like that they included the maps of the school in their proposal, quite honestly, that I didn't, I didn't like that. But um, yeah, Dom, to your point, yeah, it has to be very thoughtful, right? And the the board can meet in executive session to discuss safety. Um, for that very reason, right? You don't wanna have.
Yeah.
Did you freeze?
Yes.
He's so good at.
Yes, he looks so stupid.
But yeah.
You froze.
I don't think we should.
Is this a document?
No, I put, okay, now.
Have access, login access, but I can do it for just board only.
Yeah, yeah, I was looking at that thinking, wow.
I I think it's, the document's fine, I would just prefer we strike the the maps from it.
Well, and you know, I know they're trying to get other people and they're trying to get this organization, and so I think that's maybe something we can talk to them about too. Cuz I think that they're, you know, they're they're wanting someone to help get them out off the ground, and we've done that, I mean. HMK came down here and like, you know, we helped them get on the ground, they're our second business. So I mean, I'm all for helping um, organizations start, and I think that would be probably really good feedback, and maybe they could take it off. Cuz I'm afraid that if we don't give them that feedback, they might take this to Ashland and who knows where, a conference and leave it there, and all of a sudden. It's um, you know, information that's there, so, yeah. But I I applaud them for for starting this foundation and I think, you know, the basics are are there, I just think that, you know, I. Feedback and some thought and, you know, like I said, my concern is of the funding, and also when they're going out for funding, I'm kind of protective. Kind of like the mama bear, like, don't talk about our district if you're not part of our district. And so that was a little concern, like, when you're going out, are you going out for this foundation, are you going out as a speaker for our organization? Because I don't feel comfortable with them as a speaker of organization, cuz they don't know our organization very well or support. So I don't, yeah, I wanna make sure that there's not a. Miscommunication, again, sometimes what things with legislation are really quick and they only hear a few words, and so that is my concern.
This was a map of two guys.
Okay, anything else?
I can just something you mentioned, Michael, and is, I appreciated your comments on the safe zone thing, I do. As far as. Mentioned something about other methods and so on, all I can share with you is, I did see that other. Demonstration here in the valley where they had the plate glass window and they put the coating on the inside, bullets would not penetrate, so. That's been around and he was also up at the uh, the conference in uh, in Portland, uh, representing his company, so. They're proposing that and the other companies doing, so there's there's these two companies I know of that are doing it, there must be more.
That's great, that's great to know, thank you, Rick. Yeah, and this is a tough one for me, because I respect. I respect everyone on this board and 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 also you, Rick, and and Rebecca and in your work on this, and um, I just. This feels like a big one to be, um, you know, the first district to adopt something without any sort of. Um, guarantee on the funding and um, you know, other things, um, I know there aren't, there are a few guarantees in life, but um. Just in the situation that we're in, you know, um, just have have some concerns, but you know, what I do appreciate the most is that. I don't think there's ever enough we can do about safety, we should always be striving to find ways to make our schools more safe. Um, and so, um, whatever happens from any of this, whatever direction the board decides to go, whether it's. You know, a specific solution like this or some other safety measures, keeping that conversation going, keeping it alive, I think is super, super valuable, so. Thank you for that. Okay, uh, let's see. ODP. Brent?
Yeah, it was mentioned to kind, I think, to. Ask us to kind of see how ODP was funded and it, basically, they're not funded as its own school and its own entity, it's still under Talent Elementary. And so, yeah, as me and just broke it out to where basically they have two teachers and an aide, um, and then their their field trip costs to to this point, so.
That field trip cost is like, so, my God, I was like, what?
Yes, um.
Was I missing, is there something that?
Yeah, I see that information in my.
Or am I making this up?
I, I brought my, is it a?
I never make it.
Oh, I did.
It's like two ninety one.
Was it, did you give everybody a package?
I'm sure it's in there, I have my computer.
I, I just, I loaded it to board book.
I did.
Oh, here you go.
To see the.
But where are the girls?
Oh, yeah. Be really sure.
I'm sure I can get it on.
I know she always take care of it, it's always just.
Anyway, I don't, I don't know where, what, what's the question, I know Sarah and Polly went to the ODP back meeting. Um, I don't know if you wanna share anything about that. Um, to answer your question, Nancy, it's, we get reimbursed seventy percent. If it's an educational field trip, we get re- it's a seventy percent reimbursement still. Transportation is, uh, any transportation to and from school. Education field trips will get reimbursed seventy percent, so we really paid thirty percent of what it cost us. And and they may have fundraised for other field trips that they paid for out of there, out of the path.
I think that's true.
So.
That's helpful to know, yeah.
So, this amount is what we pay, not what? What is total?
Yeah, this is what, say, say, for example, if ODP just merged into Talent Elementary, we, we would still need two teachers, since there's twenty seven kids in each of those. Uh, they do have a full-time or whatever that amounts to, seven and a half hour aide. To to work with both classrooms and six, six grade levels, so. We typically don't have one aide for two teachers, but it's, it's a unique program with three grade levels, I mean, it's great, so. There's a, there's a lot of different juggling.
And I'm not sure if this is an appropriate question, I, we don't have things right here, there's like a big gap between. Two teacher in as far as wages there.
Is this based on a parent's old salary?
No, this is based on the current, what we're currently taking, so, basically, we have an experienced teacher and a, a two-second, third-year teacher. And those are, those are wages and benefits, wages and benefits, so it includes, includes health, um, healthcare, so. It's, it's a total compensation package.
Okay.
So. And it's, and that, and that's the difference, and that's, you know, before, last year it was two pretty experienced teachers, so it did reduce with uh. As far as years of experience, not necessarily. Sir, experience.
So, I guess my question, I mean, can we ask questions?
Yeah.
So, a couple, a couple questions, I'll just do the money part first. Is that every year they come and they give us a report, which I think is great, but it's with the kids, and I feel like I really can't ask a lot of tough questions, because. It was like, oh, look at all this, um, so, um, and they always say we are self-sufficient, we cost no money to the district. And. I appreciate, I appreciate this, um. Breakdown. And I appreciate your explaining that it is, however. I'm a big like multi-thinker, and so if we were to put them in our buildings, there wouldn't, I mean, you're talking electricity and those kinds of things as well. Is there a way to figure that out? I mean, I, I guess my thing is, is that. I'm very concrete thinking, so if someone tells me it's not an extra cost, I wanna make sure it's not an extra cost, because. I have seen where parents are, I don't want anyone to feel like. Yeah, but really, and then feel like, you know, my, my kid's in first grade at at Talent Elementary and they're not getting the same, the same. So I just wanna like be fair, and then my second part is, I wanna have a conversation about equity.
So, let me see if I understand. A question or the concern. Definitely if they, we absorb them in Talent Elementary School, it'd be more efficient for resources.
Okay.
I mean, I think that's, uh, cuz you can, if you have nine kids at each grade level, you could put four and five and. Um, sometimes we only have one English-only class, so that would, if it's a class of twenty-five, it'd go to thirty-four. But overall, when you're in. A case five, it would, it would be more efficient absorbing um, staff, and would we need a full-time aide? Um, at that point, or could we do a half-time aide? So, in that sense, it would be more efficient if it just absorbed in Talent Elementary, so. Um, as far as a cost breakdown, um, we could look at doing. We could see how that would fit for class size, um, and do that, and I could get a report that way.
Well, I guess my concern, and I'll let someone speak after, sorry, um, is that we're talking about moving ODP to Culver. And and the seem like the conversation is just the cost of the building, and it's like the cost of the building. But now you've got the cost of moving food and you've got the cost of supports and you've got the cost, I mean, I think that I just wanna be really. Clear and transparent.
It would be a more of a cost to us for mileage, for people's services, going special ed services. Music, we may not even be able to support it with two music teachers at three, at three schools. Um, but we would have to have special services, we'd have to have ELD. So, yeah, so it it would be more of a cost to to have them outside it someplace else, so. How we quantify that? We could probably guesstimate that a little bit, but this is, this is how it is currently, so it would, it would cost more resources. Could we consolidate some things or do some things possibly virtually for some services, which isn't great, possibly, so.
Well, I just wanna be clear, cuz when they're saying, you know, we pay for everything, it doesn't cost the district anything, it's really hard for me to imagine, it doesn't cost the district anything. But again, the parents are not school board members, haven't been school board members for as long as I have it. Is not into finance and is not into all these things, so of course, they're working hard on earning their money and and doing fundraisers and stuff and. I've done fundraisers, it feels like it's taken forever and you're earning all this money, and so I get, I'm not bashing them by any means, I. They probably fully believe that they're covering, but I just wanna make sure that. Yeah, like, we're not.
And I will tell you, that that's changed, I mean, the first few years, it was pretty self-sufficient, but but that, that hasn't, they haven't had. Um, they're getting their pack back together, but they went through some years where the district supported, it wasn't zero cost. We did field trips for them, just like we would any other classroom.
Right, right.
But but at the beginning, it was not, all field trips were covered by the pack, so. But we, we've supported their uh, field trips on average, not what other classrooms.
They didn't really have a pack for quite some time. Because we started in the beginning, and they didn't have, they didn't even have up with that idea, they just had a loose, you know, parents coming, they're volunteering, but they didn't have an organized group for quite some time.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah. Cuz we started in the beginning of that, we're in the first couple of years of that. I I just, are, I'm curious about around, okay, so are we having discussion whether. It's a feasible idea for them to have their own facility on Culver? Are we having a discussion on the profitability of that whole thing? I'm curious about, like, we have these costs here, so what is that, I mean, maybe I'm playing devil's advocate, but what's, what is our discussion here? Um, like, about, around this?
My, my concern is, um. It's forty-eight students that are served in the Talent Elementary School boundary. It's not a district-wide program, it's a Talent Elementary program. So if we're gonna build a building on a district facility, it needs to have availability, from my perspective, to all the students in the district. And right now, it's serving forty-eight students who live in Talent Elementary.
I, I don't know that they're all in Talent Elementary, so are they?
I don't know.
I, uh, when I, when Carl was there, that wasn't the case, they weren't living over by where Michael is, they were coming from the whole district to go there.
So I I, my understanding was that they were all from Talent Elementary School, so I'd be interested to know.
Yeah.
That they weren't, because my understanding was, um, that. That they were, it was in the Talent Elementary.
Well, and that might, if they had another facility, that might be addressed where it's a district-wide thing, right?
Right.
So they have more space, so they have more kids.
Right, so that's looking ahead as far as equity for all the students.
Right.
If the district, if this is a district goal and this is what the district wants to invest in. Then all the students in the district, and I think, initially, when I was reading on the, on the website, their program mission and. And serving, I think it was potentially written during a time when open enrollment was available. And open enrollment isn't, you have to live in, so this isn't a school choice, which is maybe how I interpreted. How the, the program description on the website, but. From, and I, and I could be very, if it's not all Talent Elementary, that's great, but my understanding was that it was forty-eight students in the Talent Elementary Boundary. To then build a district facility for, is, is really. Uh, and, um, I understand the sibling um, connection with families. But then it really does limit other families to come in, if you've got a lot of siblings coming in, and. Also, if you um, have responsibility to volunteer so many hours as part of the understanding, that really impacts. Who can be part of this and is that really meaning the whole strategic plan of meeting the needs of all students? And without having, um. Kids on IEPs or, you know, what does this really look like? So I think from, for me, looking at it from. Potentially an outside perspective or a, a new awareness perspective. Um, those are some concerns. or a, a new awareness perspective, um, those are some concerns or questions that I have.
And I think the board will need to look at O D P and see how it fits moving forward in this district. And I think, and if there's information we need to get from O D P and families in the pack, that we, I think we need to be very specific for that. Have there been a market analysis to see if we have a hundred four kids from out of district?
Like, like she's saying, like, there's no more open enrollment. But other students could come start there, right? If they didn't start somewhere else.
It has to be.
They'd have to be released from the district.
Cause maybe we had that whole thing last, last meeting where the kindergarten, the discussion about if they didn't start kindergarten and the whole, you know what I'm talking about?
Oh.
Do they have that at other schools too? Yeah.
They would, they would have to, I mean, if they're coming, it's not a, it, it doesn't classify as like a, you know, they don't need a, it's not a charter, yeah. It's not a, they don't need a, their district transferred to ten, uh, our bill. So, um, if they're attending O D P, they need to get released from their district.
Mm-hmm.
And this was during open enrollment. This was created during.
It was, yes.
So that's why I was wondering if the verbiage on the website is, is still current and accurate based on the open enrollment changes statewide, right?
Yeah.
And I wonder too, how could we make this, and I've said this before a hundred times, how many, how, how can we make this a profitable part of our school district? Maybe it's not like it is now structured, but it's some magnet, whatever other words there are to describe those type of schools. Could we create that and have that on Culver Road?
Well, if we had, what's the total number down there? I don't know.
What are you talking about? On the bottom?
Yeah.
During twenty-two thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, that's, that would be, you know, if we had, I mean, ten thousand dollars a student, that would, that'd have to be out of district students coming in.
Mm-hmm.
So two hundred, like two students or whatever.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, say that again, just, uh, so I understand.
He's figuring it per student.
So it, the, so the district is spending two hundred and twenty-two thousand.
Well, that's, that's what it's costing right now for O D P staff.
Mm-hmm.
And like full field trips, yeah. So. So I mean, to be profitable, we would need to get a number of students from out of district that we don't have now.
Mm-hmm. And can we? I don't know the answer to that.
I don't, that's what I'm saying. I don't, I don't, I don't know either. I mean, I don't. I would just see that was a tough, that would be really tough.
Mm-hmm. And like the John Mayer School, the outdoors, there are several ones that are in Ashland. Could those be?
Roush has an outdoor school, environmental science down, so.
Yeah. So what we've talked about in the past isn't what we bring in, it's what we keep by not, by having it. So by having it, do, do we keep these amount of students with those? But I also question, I would leave, like, would you, would you really leave? I mean, it's, that's hard to judge because you don't know. And I guess my concern about O D P is, I think it's a great program on all four hands on. I just don't, I think that we've evolved as a district. I've personally seen in the last ten years, and since my kids have been in school, we've evolved as a district um, quite a lot, and we still have great goals of evolving even more. And I haven't seen O D P on that same trajectory as us. And, and I, I just am. Like what specifically are you talking about that they didn't change? Like what, what was missing? Do you know what I'm asking? Well, yeah, I, yeah, I guess, well, like, we're, we're really strong on equity for, for example.
Yeah, not having it open to all things, not a lottery or some crazy thing.
If you have, and, and my main concern is if you're a parent that doesn't speak English, that's, how are you gonna communicate with the teachers? If you have a child with a disability, it's, it's harder. Um, and
It's not as inclusive.
It's not as inclusive. And working, you have to volunteer so many hours. If you have, um, several jobs, a single income, or for me, when my boys were little, Keenan took a lot of my time. I couldn't volunteer at Aiden's class because I had, they were in separate schools at the time. And so, and that separate time, so there was no way. So if you had someone, a child, more children or a child with disability or taking care of a parent or something like that, you would automatically not be able to be in there due to your life circumstances.
You're asking more about accessibility.
Yeah, I guess.
How accessible is this outdoor educational space for other students that might not have or meet a certain criteria, because that tends to be the type of
Right.
individuals that they serve. So you're, yeah.
I mean, I think for me personally, why I, we chose that, especially for George, I just chose that school for Carly is because of the blended classroom and all grade levels available. Because when she was entering there in third grade, she was working at fourth and fifth grade. She had an opportunity to then advance and not just sit in a class and hear the things that she'd done two or three years ago already. And I, so there was no challenge. So it's the other end of it, like, you know, I get that. Um, but that for us, that was, that was duly important for her to still be eager to be there and learn. So, and in the classroom where there's one grade level, it's, a teacher cannot do that with all the students, right? It's really hard, like Celine, that's why we ended homeschooling her. Because of that was not there for her. So, yeah. And I get that a hundred percent, but I think every child that is in that circumstance needs to have that option. And I'm, I'm fearful that that's not the case.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I've had conver, I've seen conversations on social media with parents, I've had conversations. And it, it's just a whole us versus them thing. I really want to be a family and think of others. And I know that, I know the parents do, I know they want, they want that for their families, but it's kind of, now that it's so small, I'd like to see it grow. It's so competitive and you only want to tell your best friend about it and you don't tell the other. It's kind of like, you know, the babysitter. I don't want to tell you my babysitter, it's because you'll take him away. And that's, and that's kind of the thing. I don't want to tell you about the school because you'll take like, cause now there's gonna be five spots. There's only five spots. If I tell everybody, there's not. And so I, I feel like there's that kind of environment and I could be totally exaggerating this and be way wrong. If I am, please let me know. But I feel like that's kind of been a culture change and, and that's not a culture that our district, I don't know. It's the constraints of the building as well. So they can't do anything about that to make it any different. The whole time they've been there, right? They could do that in a different building, differently, right? I just want to be aware of the changes we would like when they move to a different building. Because it's really easy to move that culture, that thinking from one spot to another. And so that's what I was hoping to get this conversation, so that we can, when we're talking about moving and we're, we're thinking of it as a thoughtful process, um, I also feel like sometimes they're more, they act more like a charter than part of us. And I just want to feel more of a community. I would like to really change. I just feel like they've kind of, and that's our fault. I'm not blaming them. I think it's our fault for me and mine, not for asking questions, not for saying, hey, let's change, let's do that. So that's part of the. They are involved in talent elementary in the, the parent-teacher organization there. And they go to those activities at the elementary school. So sometimes too, in our own view of our, when our kids are grown and not there anymore, and we don't know anybody in there. So we don't know how. So I think there is some of that synergy happening, way more than it was in the past. Now, I think there is, from my perspective, when we were there the other night, they were talking about.
Encouraging that, but there was also a time where we had a meeting, um, this summer, that talked about, and I specifically asked and about connecting with the P T O or working collaboratively so that, um, other, so that the students at talent elementary could maybe do some of these types of field trips. And the feedback that I, I understood was that, um, that just really wasn't feasible. There wasn't enough time to be as involved with the pack and the P T O. And, um, so I'm, I'm glad that they're encouraging that, but I, I don't know from the, you know, we, we don't know. So I am glad that they're encouraging, um, those families, but I didn't get that it was really happening. So there is. And I was a little concerned about the music resource, which I, um, just.
Um, you start, there was a presentation.
There was a presentation, right? And her and Wendy Savage came and, and, and talked. And I was trying to understand, um, the incorporation into, um, talent, with talent elementary and serving the students. But then I was trying to understand if there was additional services provided just to outdoor discovery program that wasn't provided to the, either district or to talent elementary, specifically maybe the fiddle club.
Yeah.
And so utilizing, re, again, kind of utilizing resources specifically targeted to one group that's not available to all.
So where we are now is we have a master plan that has a placeholder for O D P at Culver Field. Does that mean that that will happen tomorrow? Does that mean it'll happen in ten years? Does that mean it'll happen ever? Is.
We don't know.
Well, we get to decide. So, um, and the, um.
Oh.
Oh, the shutting down.
Thank you.
Um, and, and knowing that there's no funding dedicated to this. So
Right.
It's, it's, and I think, I think that's starting to be a little bit to, uh, from what I heard from the pack, that's starting to sink in a little bit more, um, of, of what that means. But whatever happens, a board is gonna have to give direction and say, okay, this is the course of action. If there's more information, just like station solution, we need all these, this information before we really even can talk about it and have a discussion on a long-term plan. There, a lot has changed since two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, when we really started to look at this. Uh, it's kind of twofold. I think the current building there now would be an incredible preschool. And I think we have people jumping at the bit to be in there, which would really help and benefit our, our district. Um, and so there's, I mean, it's kind of like everything's on the table. Um, you know, based on the events over the last several years, where we are at this point, I think the main thing was let's get a, first of all, it's not in the U G B yet, where.
Yeah.
We're still waiting for that meeting. Are we still waiting for that meeting to be scheduled? Cause that's the last time.
Yes. Yeah. So that's hopefully in the next month and a half or so. Um, but, but then, then we can, you know, then we can really decide. And I mean, there's all the, every point's great. I mean, every point is like, where are we? Who are we? What do we want to do? Um, yeah. And so, uh, so it's, it's not a blank slate. There's some, there's some pieces. But you know, the road forward could, could go in a lot of different directions, so.
So, um, first of all, it's one of the things I love about this board, that we're asking these questions and, you know, how do we make sure that our programs are serving all students and that the, that they're equitable, that they're accessible to all? Um, so, um, that's one of the things that, uh, makes me proud to serve with all of you. Um, I'm also sensitive, the fact, I want to be, I want to be really clear that if we're gonna have discussions involving the future of O D P, I want to make sure we're involving um, O D P in those discussions. Um, so is there a, is there a natural way that that happens, Brent, as we're working through the budget processes, we're working through, um, you know, I, I certainly don't want the perception to be that we're having, you know, what can be perceived as secret meetings to discuss the future of O D P. So what, what are, what are some good next steps where we can, um, where we can collaborate with them? You know, it's, it's interesting because when you have a charter school, you have a natural, um, timeframe, right? Where you have, you have a contract and that contract has a timeframe and you have annual evaluations and you have standards that they have to meet. What does that look like? This is so unique, um. What does that look like for us and, and just moving forward and how we have those conversations? Which I agree, timely time to, to talk about these things, right? When we're discussing the use of facilities and, and, you know, building programs that serve, that serve and are accessible to all. So how, how do we do that going forward?
That's a question for me.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, question for you.
He's like, I pass.
I do. So it's in a work session type format. We, we have, we've done this with question and answer period with data that we did in March. I mean, so it, it, I think it has to be in this format. This is where it's not secretive, it's legal, we have the board together, we have discussion, we have an agenda, we have goals for the meeting. You know, is it gonna be one session? I doubt it. Um, but it, but we have, we've moved forward and planned it out that way. Really, uh, in, in hindsight, probably should have started that a year ago. So, uh, and, and to see where we're, where we're at. But we are where we are now. And, uh, I think that's the, the only format, really. I don't think it's an information discussion and open board meeting. I don't think it's, it's, it's obviously not executive session, it's not showing up to a pack meeting. It's, I mean, to me, it seems like it's a work session.
He was asking also, I heard Michael just ask you if we can have another charter. That's what I thought he was asking, but I.
No, I, 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 I think what I was saying is unlike a charter or, or with a charter, you have sort of natural, you have natural timeframes built into your process as oversight of, as a school district. This is unique in, in that, you know, it's, it's a, it's a magnet program, um, you know, that serves fifty students, that kind of functions like a charter. But I think one of the things I've realized, um, you know, in my time in this district is, um, we don't have sort of a natural process of evaluating, um, this program. Um, and, and working collaboratively with them to talk about things like, hey, how, what does accessibility for this program look like? You know, what, what specific things are you doing so that this is a, a connection to the school district and, and not just a, you know, a charter school in disguise type of thing? Um, so I think, I think these questions are good. Um, and we, I think we need to be thoughtful about how we, how we build that in. Um, especially when we're talking about where money's going and how facilities are, are being used. And so there seems to be a little bit of a vacuum on that. I know we, you know, they've done a program report, but it's kind of more general, it's not based on a set of criteria, um, things like that. And, and I think, you know, um, whether that's a board function or a superintendent function, I think in, in any respect, it, it sort of highlights a, a bit of a gap that we have there that, that would be useful. Um, and, you know, everything we've done is totally fine. If I, if I'm a parent of O D P, quite frankly, I might be looking at this meeting going, what, what the heck? Why are they having a meeting talking about our finances and the future of the program? And I didn't even know about it, right? So I want to make sure that we are, um, collaborative, um, and, you know, in having those discussions and that we're thoughtful, um, and that we have some mechanism to, to say, these are the expectations that we have as a board, um, for, for this program, to make sure that, um, we're living up to our mission of being an equitable, accessible, um, school district. And I don't think we have that right now. Am I wrong?
As far as how we evaluate the program?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, this could be looked at too. I mean, we have S D I, we have two-way immersion. I mean, I think we have several magnet programs that this gives us the opportunity to create some, uh, an evaluation or an understanding even fully of, as a board, of how those, how those look and, and what we're doing to support them and, and um, how they're performing and, and looking at goals. Because, right? At one point, there was. At one point, there was STEM, which became STEAM, and there was SDI and Outdoor Discovery and Two Way Immersion, so we, we had examples of. Magnet schools, but again, program.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not just, not just ODP, it's it's a lot of, yeah, it's a lot of things like that, yeah, sorry, Brent, go ahead.
And we're, I mean, we've evolved, to your point, we've evolved as a district, we're a much different district than we were thirteen years ago. And this program is created in response to and how, how does it morph and. But I think, I think work sessions are um definitely the 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 best way to go and now that's just. Yeah, like I said, hindsight's twenty twenty, but it it's, we can definitely get some, at least a couple scheduled before the end of this year.
Can I ask a question about that? So on a works, the work session. Um how would that, I mean, obviously our board, would we have the pack, would it be all parents? How how would we make sure that we were equitable and each, but also not like overwhelming where everyone is?
Yeah, I don't, I think the board would discuss that and see how they want to invite the pack leadership, invite the um. You know, Tiffany and I met before the pack meeting, a month ago or so with with four or five key people, so. That's two teachers for sure, probably, so.
I was just wanting to make sure, cause I've been, when I was in city council, I've been on work sessions with the whole public and it it becomes a little bit tricky.
Yeah.
And um you know, I just wanna be cautious to kind of think this out.
Um absolutely, and I appreciate you thinking that I have the answers. Thank you for that.
You always do.
Uncharted territory type stuff, so um.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, no, yeah, no.
I just broke the rules.
Don't ever surprise the pretending.
No, I don't, and I don't mind, I just like, but that, I think that's something that we have to, you know, we talk about and say, hey, this is. This is how, this is a container we're gonna you kind of be in for this work session and here kind of the, you know, ground rules and the participants and and go from there, so. And I have no preconceived idea what.
Well, no, but I think to your point of an agenda with items, specific items to discuss and and get community engagement and feedback, that is the.
It's not just a pack, maybe also considering other people in the district who are interested. And maybe didn't get in or have interest in it, but you know, is there other people in the district that would join this? We don't know what the demand is, honestly.
Well, I don't even know how many people are aware of the program, that's like my number one question is. How many pe- people are really aware of the program? And I think, obviously, I think Talent Elementary has more aware, but I think if you went into Orchard Hill or Phoenix Elementary. I don't think it's very, I mean, that's, I don't know, I'd love to be surprised, but. Yeah, I don't know, in the next survey, we're saying how tall the parents are to throw that in, but. Um yeah, but that that's like my major question is, what what's the awareness of the program even?
May I ask some, some basic questions of, I'm trying to get up the speed with all you guys. We get ten thousand dollars per student, is that?
Roughly.
Okay, roughly, and. This serves forty nine stu- fifty students.
It, there are twenty seven, yeah, fifty four students.
Okay, even even better, I mean, our break even is. I mean, bringing in ten is costing us forty five hundred dollars, based on these numbers. So we're making money. Over and above, now, do these students, my question is, do the students that come here, are they coming here for this? Just for this program or are they, would they be in our school anyway?
I don't, I don't know if we have ten out of district students in our program.
But what about in district, are they in district because of this program?
Do they live in the district?
They live in the district, but would they be home schooled, let's say?
Would they be pulled out of this?
I don't, I don't know if I could a- answer that question for you guys, so.
So anyway, dollars and cents, why this is your work, kind of makes sense to have a program, that's that's all. And as far as equity goes, you're talking about other schools in our district, Phoenix, Orchard Hill, they could be bused, though we were Catholic, or are they?
Well, that was a question.
My question is, is is are they, my understanding was that this program served primarily Talent Elementary. It seems like there's a lot of unknown questions, yeah, so it might be, I mean, cause it seems like we're also kind of speculating a lot.
Right.
Um the website says one thing, you have a particular understanding, we might not necessarily know, so maybe a good starting point would be to. Start to have a conversation with them for, and and maybe we're just. Attentive, active listeners as they're sharing about their program and then we can, that will generate some. Questions and clarity, because it seems like we're kind of all from a little bit of a different perspective.
So one of the things they asked, what could we do to address some of the accessibility, some of the things that, you know, equitable and. A suggestion was um they did a strategic planning process five years ago. And, you know, updating a strategic plan that has mirrors and function of the the districts for your district strategic plan. Whether that's gonna happen, I don't know, but that would, that would be something that I think would. Give a little more, a little more information, but.
I a little bit of concern that I had from the meeting was that was delegated to the Culver Road Committee. The strategic, aligning the strategic plan of ODP with the district-wide strategic plan. Sounded like it was falling on the Culver Road Committee of the pack.
Well, they they feel they're giving, they're trying to give a pitch to G D on there, so that's.
Right, so that's right, but do you see what, so.
Yeah.
That I.
I wasn't at that meeting, so I didn't, that's.
No, but did you understand that Polly as well, that it sounded like, that was my understanding, was that the cul- those who were. Attending meetings regarding the Culver Road facility um were the ones tasked with aligning the ODP strategic plan with the district's strategic plan.
They're, they're gonna redo their strategic plan anyway. Because it's not updated, so what they're, you know, it 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 maybe not have the same values or the the same. Types of thing, it's, there is probably some facility things in there, so that may be their strategic plan.
I didn't think that that's what I heard, I heard that they were asking for people on committees, that was the open site, that could be them, but not necessarily that they were connected with each other, so, yeah.
And that doesn't happen, planning takes a long time.
No, that's my interest, my concern a little bit was that it was um parents as part of pack leadership and not the staff. Part of that conversation, that was my concern.
Um but to me, point, I think there's a lot of different things, so I think maybe in the same room and um, you know, having this conversation together, I think would be more valuable.
And they've given us, like I said, they've given us the program reports, but they seem like, again, maybe that's from my brain, is they seem like. Just a little bit different than last year's and it's like. And I'm not sure how much information is true or it's just passed on from, and not, not that it's false, but. You know, we've all looked at these reports and we're, I think you said no blind, yeah, and like, like, oh, we're just gonna change this number and then like. But this actually isn't really all all the, all actual information, do you know what I'm saying? They have it, they, I feel like they've just kind of like tweaked it a little bit each year and I don't know if. For instance, they, they, every year they say we're self-sustainable and. I'm not, you know what I mean, like, is, are they really, that was the question, are they really, or is that just something they say every year? Because it was true and no one's researched it.
And what is the budget, right, can we, and not the, to be controlling over anything. But what does that mean? What does the self-sustainable actually look like? In numbers, because I think that then that opens up opportunities for us to be really thoughtful about. Who comes in, who does he come in, how much do they grow, how much do they shrink, what does, what does that answer actually mean?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I I think it's great to listen, but I wanna make sure that they're not just regurgitating what they've said in the past, because. Obviously, that hasn't, I still have questions, do you know what I'm saying, I don't want, I don't wanna invite them and say, well, let's have them learn about your program. And then regurgitate what they've told us the last few years and then we still have a lot of questions. And then them feeling like we blind sighted them because we did it, do you see what I mean?
My apologies, I didn't necessarily mean that all we would do is listen, but it's for them to give us a little bit of a context to their program. For us to actively listen to that and then for us to have an opportunity to ask questions to. I mean, it's very apparent that there's a lot of gaps in understanding of where we're at, there's a lot of things that are unclear, I think from all of us. And not that that's necessarily a bad thing, it's just an opportunity for us to do some bidirectional learning.
Right, and and not to, I totally understood what you were saying, but I wanna make sure that when they're coming, like we'll work.
That they're not excited by the questions.
Fire questions, right, I don't want, I want them to like, oh, and then as.
Like you were being so trauma informed, like let's inform them that we want to have all these questions, or that we have questions.
I I don't, I don't wanna, you know, I've been in some uncommunicative meetings lately and communication is the key to the problem.
My just communication, understanding of that communication, because sometimes people can come to us and not.
I think what we could do is have representatives co-create the agenda, so we have things that.
Perfect, yes. Yeah.
Just me, it's not for the past. Give you all the answers.
He's like, they're mad, can't get it.
Michael, we're turning it over to you.
Okay, so just just for next steps for you then, the plan is to set up another work session. Um where ODP will be a a topic, sounds like you're gonna get with, so here's, here's a question, who is in charge of the program? Is that Erin? Is it the the lead teacher? Who who's, what is the leadership structure of the program?
You're giving both the teachers and the president of the pack.
Okay, they're 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 sort of like the directors.
And Heather's not in that meeting at all.
Then there, what Heather is, yeah, she's in, um but as far as in ODP, um and then they usually have their executive council, which is the officers of the pack.
Okay.
And we have a work session in, we have one in March.
We did, we added a second meeting in March, we did, because we were gonna talk about something important.
Well, we could, we we did the EDI, we did the EDI report, that's March, we did.
Was it safety, is EDI?
March twenty one, March twenty first, we have a a work session.
So we could, we could, I don't wanna, um, I mean, that's um. We could see about what that agenda would look like.
Because I think we wanna have safety, we have, we want a lot of things, um. It's not bad.
Well, safety could also be the end of the year, June, and we can look at our, we could look at um. Actually, and it would have an EDI focus to it, like, you know, whether suspensions and, you know, those types of things.
Is is that what I'm remembering as safety?
Well, last year we did safety and um EDI committee kind of shares some report, but I've kind of shared with Kelly that. You know, by policy, they share um with the board uh a annual report and so that's kind of a. Whether we add safety in there um and may maybe EDI and ODP would marry together, that would be it, you know, maybe. Together, so.
It sounds like it's an alignment, since some of the questions are really thoughtful about. Inclusion, equity, accessibility, sounds like.
Mm-hmm.
We could, we could look at that and whether we wanna plan a different work session, uh we can talk about that, but we have one. March, I'll be here before you know it, sorry to say.
If we're gonna do, I mean, if we, we just talked about doing this, you know, this whatever, I'm gonna say this, safe solutions. And make March and then do, I mean, are we overloading ourselves?
I don't think so.
I think.
Remind you what we were doing with state solutions in March.
The first March meeting we were talking about doing.
I think that's just information and discussion, no, that's not, that's just that, that's what they kind of, maybe giving some direction, I'll go back, that's an information discussion, yeah.
So many things, this is why we pay you the big.
Yes, and then the the session in January, and March twenty first would be.
EDI and a.
EDI and ODP.
Mm-hmm, sounds good.
And talking to pack leadership about a shared agenda, right?
Go ahead and dismiss Michael.
Sorry, I can't, when multiple people are talking, I can't hear what's going on, sorry. You turn, are you waiting for me to do something?
Yeah, yeah.
Are you waiting, are you waiting for me to adjourn the meeting? It's super, it's super effective to have the guy on the computer running the meeting, right? I should have just, I should have just turned it over to Polly, okay, we're adjourned, this is my gavel on my laptop, thank you all so much.
Thank you, Michael.
Have a good evening, thank you, I'll try.
I think we have a lot of questions. That was just a whole.
Everything is okay.
It is okay, that's.
Yeah.
Just don't ask me at the meeting. Everything, their owners are very diverse and it's okay, Ray gets it wrong.
I'm not sure I know how that.
They're mission.
We're done now.
I'm trying to, I'm like, stable.
They won't have to, yeah.